For our person meeting, the regular session will come to order. Just I want to start with two brief announcements. We have an executive session on a matter of personnel with potential action prior to this meeting. And a executive session of the Personnel Committee was held May 20th. No action. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America is to be held in this nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
We will call.
Ms. Mary.
Here.
Ms. Elizabeth Giffey.
Here.
Councilwoman Agerton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Booker.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Neal.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Elizabeth Cassidy.
Present.
Chief Meyer.
Here.
Superintendent Kiwi.
Here.
Manager Kuzersky.
Here.
We have four.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda on the consent agenda or the regular agenda to be added or approved.
I have an amendment to one of the special events. The craft is going to be held September 4th. There's another craft show that was already approved only the 17th.
Would you prefer to take care of the amendments to the public works and shake the items?
Please.
To add the names?
You tell me. It'll be fine.
I think we have the appropriate. So, I guess it doesn't matter which order, but the two items for conditional offers, one will be for Michelle Chedister. And the other will be for Leon Cash. Are there any other additions or changes? Do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Second.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, I forgot amendments or changes to the proposed minutes. I'm sorry. Any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Are you ready for that? You're adding anything?
No.
Very important. Thank you. April 19th.
We're good citizens.
Good citizens. Any citizens comment, please?
Mr. Fitz is here. He has what was provided in front of you tonight. He had a request for council to look at a situation he's got on Sharon Avenue. Mr. Fitz, do you want to?
I've been told it probably won't make much difference in coming here tonight, but I have a situation, probably has occurred in the past, where I have a neighbor, a tree floors my property, a very big tree, completely dead. I was tempted to resolve it with a neighbor, in front of conversation, even offering to pay for the removal of the tree. We had just been treated rudely and basically been told he wasn't interested, which is surprising because he is young and takes himself. And this tree is about 20 to 25 feet from our sunroom in our family room where we live most of the time. Thirty-five years ago, I lived through a similar incident where a home I rented, the tree actually fell on the home and was very lucky at that time not to have been killed because it didn't fall where the bedrooms were. But it's a situation that I've experienced in which we are. Because I didn't want it to be a he says, she says thing, I did have a professional tree service come over and look at the tree. And right now, as the ordinance is evolving, all I can do is trim the branches off on my side of the property, which is five feet from where the tree is. As the owner, the tree service says that's basically a Band-Aid and will prevent some of the branches from falling on my head, but the tree itself, it can still fall down. So, as exchange now, there's no ordinance of enforcement, you know, there's nothing on the books. The insurance company says we can't do anything until the tree falls on you, deters your home, you're injured, or you perhaps even get killed. So, I'm wondering, you know, if a specific ordinance, a very targeted type of ordinance, you know, because I realize you have situations where you have healthy trees that have a root, and that's normal, you cut it down, it's not a danger. And you'd have trees that die and maybe be located on a part of the property where they would do no harm, or lower the size that would do no harm. But I was wondering if you would consider writing a notice that if a tree existed and it was not ascertained by a neighbor, by a professional tree service, that that tree was dead and was in imminent nature of collapsing or could collapse, and was of the size and location to another neighbor's home, that it would make the homeowner responsible for remedying the situation. Right now, I have no remedy at all, you know. We live in, our home, we're both safe in it. My wife has a heart condition. She's very nervous, you know, she's only spends most of her time in the sunroom. And, you know, we don't really have money to move. We're both retired. And there's no way to, because I can't have a conversation with this gentleman, and he's not even open to me paying for it. There's nothing we like to legally do, other than, you know, hope that the tree doesn't fall on our house and kill us. So, I'm coming to you, asking you if you would consider crafting a very targeted ordinance, you know, for a specific situation, not mine in particular, but, you know, as I described, a tree and a location, that would require a homeowner to remedy the situation. Now, in the writing that I put there, I showed you, if he doesn't deal with it in 90 days and the township could hire somebody to do it, he would have to pay for it. I'm told that the borough wouldn't do anything like that. But perhaps you would consider some type of fine or something that would encourage a person like this to, you know, to do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Fitz. We will consult with our solicitor and see if there were any remedies that we could come up with for your situation or situations that would arise like this in the future. This is for the record, your address is 410 Sharon Avenue.
410 Sharon Avenue. The home is under my wife's name, which is Patricia Corelli. We both signed that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mayor's report.
Thank you. April 19th, interviewed by the Carl Sentinel about past and upcoming Jubilee Day's great future article. Twenty-first, tribute to Veterans Breakfast hosted by State Rep. Sharon Loder, Health the First Church of God Community Sir. The mayor was honored to be invited out of Tate Park. The twenty-third, local businessman is the owner, operator, and curator of Treasures of the Past. A tour is wonderful. If interested, contact the mayor for more information. Twenty-seventh, South Central P.I. Highway Safety held Safe Driving Competition at the McCannsburg High School. Out of seven of the schools, McCannsburg came in first. Congratulations for a win. And the twenty-ninth, invited ladies to the activities change of command ceremony. Captain Gill relinquished commands of Captain Thomas, followed by Captain Gill's retirement ceremony. April 29th and 30th took part in the joke in the Simpson's, Simpson Friends of Library Book Sale. In outlooks for the upcoming move to their new exciting location at the Agway property. May 14th, last supper was held at the Colony House Restaurant. Remembering one of its past names was the Paradise, end of report.
Thank you. Mayor's report.
Yeah, I gave you a report. There were two things on there I'd like to bring everyone's attention. Engineer Rogowski and I met with Suez out on Darrell Road. We walked Darrell and Sharon to discuss the road repairs for the Paddle Pay to that project. They were planning on starting that last week, but I don't know what happened. Now, this week, we're getting the rain, we're supposed to, so they're not going to be out there working now. But they did fix some of the yards. They did fix some of the rest of the yard. Those are what we get the most complaints about. We met, I met with Evercore again, and they sent in some price quotes. The, I know there's a discussion on there about sweeper. The, that was a sweeper trust. It was, the quote that they gave was $180.25 an hour, and that doesn't include the driver. The driver is an extra $72.10 an hour. So, we're going to be looking for something else for Jubilee Day also to see if there's some other quotes out there we can get. One of the other things, we met with Josh Kilmer. Dan Yon, I met with Dan, we discussed some things about the insurance renewal. Our insurance premium has gone up, which we kind of expected it to, but it's still, we're still very well in the low, mid to low range of insurance premiums for municipalities our size that Kilmer carries. So, we're in pretty good shape there. Feasibility study with Poole. Met with Mr. Trump, John Trump, not Don, but John, from Kimmel and Wurtgen, is the architect firm he's with, and went over a lot of stuff to Poole. One of the interesting things is UGI, I went with UGI NSA for the Allen Dale Road project they're going to be doing. That's from one where they're bringing a new gas line up to backfeed the Navy base. They're going to bring it the whole way up Allen Dale Road, cross the railroad tracks and go into the base from there. It's a big, they're digging it. They're going, they're not going under the sidewalk anymore. However, they are going to replace all of the crosswalks with ADA crosswalks as Greg, as of design. So, the residents will not have to pick up those costs for the new sidewalks whenever we top that road. So, we're in pretty good shape there. I was pleased with that. I think that's about the extent of it. Some things coming up, the traffic meeting study was yesterday for Woods Drive for the project detour. I did not make it, I was tied up with another phone call with a resident. I've got another Poole feasibility study coming up. And then, Doherty here, the 26th, I meet with the Auditor General for the liquid fuels.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
The Bureau makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Certainly, a second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to finance administration and ordinance system update.
Action on the revised termination agreement by and between the Borough of McCannsburg and the Municipal Authority of the Borough of McCannsburg terminating the administrative and operational services agreement dated September 1st, 2020. See attachment 08.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Jagerton makes a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Is Martin second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Action on the revised stormwater sewer system lease agreement between the Municipal Authority and the Borough of McCannsburg and the Borough of McCannsburg, attached, attachment 09.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
The Bureau makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is Jagerton second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Last item under Finance Administration and Ordnance is a discussion on application for Cumberland County Recovery Grant.
We have until June 17th to submit for this grant. We can go, mail request is $50,000, maximum request is $2 million. There are four, there are three categories that it's under. One is mental health, one is municipal recovery, COVID recovery, the other is infrastructure. Then discussions with Chief NEF, the fire company is probably going to go under the COVID because there's the construction of property and stuff is in there, construction of buildings and stuff is in that, when they're going to go after the project, so probably we're after $2 million. There are a myriad of things that we could use this stuff on. I don't know if anybody went out and took a look at what was on the county's website. There's some things in there. I do have a few emails in to Corey Johnson and John Kowski and Axelrod to discuss the CLFSLR Recovery Fund. I think that's the acronym that they're using. There's so many numbers and letters. But there are certain rules that the county's applying to this money because this is, this is ARCA money, is basically what it is. There is a 30% match. So, whatever we go after, there's things that we look at. There were a couple of things that I thought it might be a good idea to try to pursue. One of them is the Keller Street stormwater issue we have up there between Keller, George, and Broad. Try to take care of that. One of the other ones that Engineer Rogowski spoke about was dirt road interceptor plus rebuilding dirt road. Maybe we can do that in conjunction with Silver Spring Township and get a pull over and drive into that too. That's a very expensive fix. The Keller Street is, we're looking at probably about $2 million for Keller Street. Then, the third option would be potentially the purchase of the building next door, talking at the end of the block here, and refurbishing it into essentially the new police station. That's my three ideas. I will open it up. We will do what we can to write this grant, this application, for whatever we feel is the best way to go. I know Councilman Egerton and I spoke. She would like to see some money put into the parks, which is a very good plan also. So, this is where you all get to make the big decision and point me in the direction and tell me loose.
What is the deadline for the grant?
June 19th.
That's right. Jubilee Day.
The day after, Friday after Jubilee, so you're going to have it done by 15. No, I'm going to, Jubilee Day is right.
I think, looking at the qualifications are what the county's looking for in terms of the guidelines, I think our biggest needs and our most expensive to use our infrastructure. And if we could somehow tie it in with the stormwater and that George Keller, the George Street, Keller Street, Borough Street project would be one of the biggest ticket rates that we could try to get funded. And that we've already put in motion and have some design work completed on Jack Road.
Yes, some plans Greg has, we have drawings, we have a beginning draft of the way it's going to go. There's a few utilities that are causing some conflicts, but that may need adjusting on our plans, but for the most part, it's ready to go.
What is the, do you have a left and a right, what that entails?
He's taken around $2 million.
So, I think that is one that we try to go, because the school has done, the district has done their part in putting the infrastructure in place at the, at school in order to help us with our stormwater issues, but we need to fill our part and also need to get that street, this street.
I agree.
Yeah, that's bad.
I think that draws in the most cross, the most issues that would hit the target items for that grant and probably get the most attention.
Yeah. If you apply for $2 million, will they give you $1? Will they give you competition as to what you ask? Competition's going to be pretty great. I mean, that's.
How much money in total do they have?
They were awarded in their first grant, I think, $47 million. So, there's, I mean, I know the fire company's going after $2 million. If we're requesting $2 million with a 30% match, you know, that's going to use some of our ARP funds or our general governmental expenditure fund. So, it's, I mean, it's a doable project. With our meeting that we had with the school district, they've, as you said, they've fulfilled their part of what we asked, what Greg and I asked them to do, to help alleviate this problem. Now, it's up to us to take it the next step. You know, I mean, and I think as the chair, when you were the chairman of the authority, we met with some people from that place, from the corner up there, and they were asking what's the plan for it. So, we did show them some things, but, and they actually came to some of the authority meetings, or one of the authority meetings, and asked specifically something to be done. So, this is the place where we get a lot of road issue calls because of the nature of the road up there. It will be very impactful. I could really get, I think, a much better letter of support from the school than we got for the walk roads grant involved with this. So, you know, we could, there's a potential that, you know, we can say that we partnered with the school because they've already had it. They've done their part when they did the upgrading, so.
When is the disbursement of the fund?
What's that?
When is the disbursement of the fund?
I want to say September. I'm looking for it, I can't find it right now, so.
That would also then, so what we're doing with the borrowing for infrastructure, that would give us more runway so that we could do more with that money than have to spend it on Keller Street potentially.
Yeah.
Totally agree with the infrastructure issues, but I'm coming back to the 27th we have, that mental health was the hardest issue in the survey. At the municipal level, is there anything that we're missing in the opportunities before we set around perhaps infrastructure?
I don't, I don't think we have the staff or something like that. But what would that look like? What would the rate will be?
Housing.
To do any kind of programming like that, I think, or any kind of outreach, I think the staffing that we have, we're not equipped to do something like that. I think it would, it's better served at the county level.
That's what I, I do wish I could answer the question, so.
That's a good question. I think that the mental health piece of it is a really important part, but I don't know as a borough that we would be effective. But I do know that mental health housing is high priority because there's not enough of that.
Yeah. Under the mental and physical health grants, part, portion of this, the Cumberland County Recovery Grant, capital projects for healthcare, projects to provide health services, crisis intervention, community support for people with intellectual disabilities, community-based support projects, GED job training, counseling, in-school counseling, recovery, reentry services, housing assistance, other projects that may help accomplish the objectives. Municipalities are not on here, which is kind of odd. They're not listed as eligible for that. So, under the infrastructure grants, there are municipal governments, municipal authorities, private sector businesses, nonprofit organizations working near Cumberland County. This is the one that I think we can go under for the grant, for the Keller Broad project up there. We have, Greg has drawings on hand that I can actually submit with this. I think we'll go a long way.
So, will it be actionable, like in the springtime, if we get the disbursement in the fall, we could put this plan into action?
I think, I think by fall, you'll have bid documents ready to go out, and then a word contract as soon as we can get it done. Keller Street is going to need probably full depth restoration because that street is brick with a thin layer of asphalt on top of it. So, that's going to be a pretty substantial, substantial bill there.
My hope is just to make this impactful. I think we talk a lot about making sure that people understand that we're spending these dollars and getting the project done. So, I'm happy to support infrastructure, just making sure that we have a timeline and that we push to get it done.
So, to that point, is the authority going to make an application as well?
I think that they would support our application for that. Or, well.
Do we want to keep competing against, like that?
No, they would want to compete against.
Because we're always going to compete against a firehouse.
Well, the firehouse, and I'll be honest with you, there's another sector there, business, nonprofit, municipality COVID-19 recovery grants. There are, this is open to businesses still, so there could be businesses in town that are going after some of this grant money too. So, we may be, we may be competing against our own.
Sure that they have targets for what you're going to do so far.
They probably buckets, how much money to give to which one.
Right.
Yeah, that is not, the press release doesn't have on here what the total pool is. So, yeah, it's 49 million. And they're expecting another $25 million in late 2022. So, they're, they're getting a nice chunk coming in, so. There's funds there, it's just I think we're going to be, we're going to make sure we've got a pretty rock solid situation here.
Do you think that the fire company will be making their own application? No.
No. The grant writer that they hired is the one that's going to be doing the application.
What does that mean?
Yeah, yeah, they'll be doing their own. I'm going to actually talk to Rogowski and have his staff take this one because of the quick turnaround time on it. The Walk Works one, that one worked me out pretty good. The quick turnaround time went in. This one is even quicker yet, so I think we need to get, I need to get Greg's input in this. Plus, he has all the stuff on one hand that he can throw at this.
Do we think that the county's going to do a second grant opportunity in the future?
Their email, their press release doesn't speak to that, it speaks to this one.
We can just be hopeful.
Yeah, I mean, I think we go after the $2 million with a 30% match. We have that, we might as well put it towards this and see what we can do. And I think this is going to be the most impactful, so. There are other avenues to address the park and a few of the issues that Steve and I spoke about, so, and I think those are, those are ones that are coming up relatively shortly.
Yeah, I'm hearing some bugs from you too about some grant writing, because the parks are, they need a little love.
Any other questions, Congress?
Feel like the other option? I do. We're, seemed like a pretty good consensus. Thank you. It's on the head.
Sorry, the story from here.
We have a still, we have a little schedule now, and we, that's our project waiting for our commission photographers to find some photos to look in for with our contractors from the website. So, that's a little longer than I expected, it's personal contact, but we'll move forward as those photos come in, and we're also waiting for photos from the students as well. And, enough for the updates.
Thank you. Hey, don't look bad with the video, audio upgrade for this room.
Yeah, we haven't had any discussions on that, or something Roger and I will be talking about more feature.
Yep.
Sounds good. Moving on to economic development. Mr. Bureau is not here, but we do have a report from Dr. Gray, Executive Director of Renaissance and Chedister.
Okay. I thought I was, this is a very informal report, thought I'd bring you up to date on some of the things that have been happening in my little world around Center Square, one of which is the grant that I just submitted. It's a Community Development Block grant that is, that uses HUD money administered, so, federal money and administered through Cumberland County's Community Development Program. Chris Rafferty is the director of that, some of you. Chris Rafferty is the director of that, some of you probably know Chris. Um, and, uh, so, um, what I thought I would do is explain to you exactly what this particular grant is that I'm, I've just put in for, uh, covers. Uh, and what you see here is about thirty thousand foot view of the, of Center Square. The first grant that I put in actually takes that close look at one west main or the right side of the image that you're seeing here, and the, uh, area that, uh, the current grant is looking at is the area right in front of PNC Bank. So it is the area from the steps of the bank up to about where that oval begins. So, uh, and, uh, this is the kind of grant that is very specific in nature, it's looking for, uh, use of funds that, to, to create a park or create some sort of public space for people of low or, uh, low to, uh, middle in, moderate income, and, uh, if you look at the next slide, you can see exactly where that is, uh, the, um, maybe you can't, it's a little small, but, but what you see here is a census tract, uh, for downtown Mechanicsburg, and low to moderate income is defined as income of people residing there whose income falls, uh, less, whose, whose income is less than, is more than fifty-one percent of the total. So we, uh, in this area alone, and that arrow is pointing directly to, um, Main and Margaret Street, and in the area of Block Three, tract one fourteen, uh, the income level is at fifty-nine percent, so it is a full eight points above what's considered the low-income level. So we qualify for, for that grant, and, uh, one of the issues that they will do is to ma, find ways of making life a little bit better for, for people in that income range, so you will, um, you will see that part of what we're looking for, if you go to the next slide, is, uh, the area that involves public transit, that involves safe walkways, that involves a bike station, uh, ways that will help people be much more mobile in that area to, uh, uh, have transit options out of Mechanicsburg to get jobs or to travel within Mechanicsburg for, for positions as well. The bike park is not just for, or to be used solely by those of low to, to moderate level incomes, but to be used by Mechanicsburg area residents who more and more are relying on their bikes to get around and are looking to find those kind of connection points between Mechanicsburg and points northeast, south and west. And, uh, what you see in front of you is a concert, but one that seems to have been vetted, uh, carefully enough by our stakeholders, that it represents a pretty close rendering of what we imagine it will finally look like, and, uh, the position here, of course, is looking from a good stone company over across the street to PNC, and you see that identification wall, that, uh, or stone wall there, behind it will be seating and, uh, a place for flowers and so on, and easy access and good, new ADA accessible, uh, ramps, new sidewalks, new curbing and so on, that will, uh, allow easier transits on foot. The, to the left of PNC Bank and in the foreground, uh, just behind that tree, is, uh, an incredible, awesome, drop dead, cool bus station that, uh, we will have there, a covered transit stop that will be used for, in addition to serving as that bus stop, also will serve as a place for information for residents as well, so it'll be a state-of-the-art, um, pavilion, if you will, for us, uh, and the bike park is right behind that area, that space between, um, the bank and where the old post office proper begins. So, uh, and, and in the next slide simply is, uh, a look at it from a different angle, uh, and that is looking from one west main down to, uh, across in front of PNC Bank and that old post office. You can get a slightly different angle of vision on what we intend to do there. In the distance, and, uh, in almost the bullseye center of that image, you see a, a little fountain, and that is currently the fountain that sits behind.
My fault, sorry.
Union Church.
Sorry, wrong button.
Oh.
That's the, uh, yeah, it's over, is it behind the union church or behind the firehouse?
It's behind the union church.
Okay.
But in this conceptual drawing, it has developed little feet and moved its way out to the place where it originally stood, or nearer where it originally stood when it was first installed, uh, in Mechanicsburg in nineteen oh seven, and, uh, because it has been used iconically in so many images of Mechanicsburg and is associated often with, uh, Mechanicsburg as a town and kind of defines itself with its ability to feed dogs, horses and humans all at once, uh, and because it's so cute, uh, we want to make sure that it ties its way back out to the square where it needs to be. So, uh, that will serve as kind of a centerpiece, if you will, for that side of the revitalization project, uh, and then we're, we're hoping once this area is taken care of and, uh, we have, uh, have developed this route, there will be additional funds to develop what we saw in that opening slide, which is that oval walk of history. Uh, and, uh, to the left of that oval, there will be a plaza of flags that will honor all of our service, uh, men and women, and we're, uh, we're hoping that, um, we're waiting for a final survey from PNC Bank about exactly where their property line ends and where the borough line begins, because it's lost in the midst of time somewhere. Uh, the last one that they found was nineteen twenty, uh, and one of the earliest ones we found at the historical society was where, um, where deed lines often began and ended was with the middle of the street. So we don't have a good sense yet of exactly what is their property, and I see you're kind of scowling there, Roger, so I'm happy to answer any question, but, yeah, there, there's some discrepancy between, um, the bank somehow thinks that it owns just where that little lip of greenery is in front of the, oh, bank.
Right.
At the left of that, where those, where the, yeah, right there, that strip right there in front of the, the bank, they believe their property ends right about there and the borough property begins, so, once we have clarification on that, we're going to go heavy after getting that walk of history built and the plaza flags built, uh, and we believe we'll have good support for that because, uh, it's the right thing to do, and it will preserve our history and, um, our very rich history that's fluid, um, being decayed away, and I don't want to see that happen. Uh, our servicemen and women will certainly make, uh, good use of that plaza flags, as will the borough proper for events and ceremonies and so on. So I would say stay tuned on that one. The, um, the area under consideration for this grant, for which we've asked two hundred and seventy-two thousand, uh, will be that, uh, that area in front of the bank that you see with those squares and rectangles. So that's, uh, that's what I wanted to bring you up, up to date on in terms of, of grants. Uh, we will, um, we will undertake other grants as well. Uh, we're looking for grants that don't take a match, so we've been lucky enough so far to be able to work with you guys, to be able to ensure that we get this done without a match, uh, and with, um, with the borough's, um, sponsorship, uh, it will, our representative, I, I think it will happen. I'll be curious to see how much they actually come up with. Uh, Chris Rafferty told me that the total amount of money that they would probably be, it would be in that HUD bucket, only going to be between one point one and one point three million, so, um, we had to kind of scale down our ask to a proportional size, so let's, let's see how much we actually get out of that. So that's it. Uh, the other, just a little piece of information I wanted to give you is, if you've been by the square recently, you know that it's all grass and it's getting ratty, isn't it? It's getting high. Uh, so, so, I'm aware that one of the reasons why it hasn't been, it was supposed to have been mowed today, to tell you the truth, and edged and all of that, but, um, but we were trying, trying to, you know, we're a private, ready nonprofit, we're looking for somebody to donate an electric mower, and we will take care of the rest. All we need is an electric mower, we've got a place to store it, to charge it, people don't use it, we just don't have an electric mower, so, uh, if anybody knows anybody who might like to donate, uh, for you, whatever you call it, watt mower, electric mower, let me know, otherwise we're going to make do, and, uh, we believe we'll be able to get to that soon. Uh, we also have a very big hole in the sidewalk on South Market, um, that we, you know, we have to repair, and, um, we, we don't have any members of our bar who seem to be eager to take that on, so I did approach Roger about finding somebody who might be able to help us do that, so I'm kind of waiting to see what we might be able to do to get that repaired. So that brings you up to date on what's going on with the partnership and that, that area of the downtown, and I'm happy to answer any questions I have, or if you have any thoughts about where we might find a donation for an electric mower, or where we might be able to partner with anybody else you're aware of, uh, on, on all of this, we're always looking for that partnership connection. Are you okay with this? I mean, are you still jumping up and down because you're so awesome?
I'm going to ask a question, a controversial question. Don't get mad.
Aye.
The Christmas tree. Where is the Christmas tree going to go?
It can go wherever it wants to go.
You know, I don't say a question, you see, and it ends up, yeah. You know that, because that's the first question that's going to be asked, that's.
I, I know, it's a Facebook question, but I just wonder, like, because I'm all about, um, you know, a pretty tree, because we always have ugly trees, um, so.
A lot of trees were nice.
But, it was better.
But they were not planted in the ground, like, was something that, uh, they had.
The dirt is really gross there, and you need to change the soil composition, so hopefully we'll get some good stuff, but I don't really care if the trees planted or artificial, um, which ones look pretty.
Artificial.
I love artificial. I'm starting my heart right now.
There are a couple of different places there to put it, and, and along with what Dane mentioned, there is some, all the things that we can find about what property the borough owns in front of PNC and the old law hut, um, the only parts that we own according to that were mirrored set of plants, um, and it's like twenty-five or thirty feet.
Yeah.
Off the curb line back to towards the front of the building, um, and it stops, I mean, it, the, from what's on the west side of the street, you mirror it over onto the right, on the east side of the street, and that's what we own. So PNC may be correct that we only own up to there, because as they're looking at a deed from nineteen twenty, if I'm not mistaken, Franklin Hall was still there in twenty, in nineteen twenty.
Oh.
And, so looking back.
Nineteen twenty.
Yeah.
Is Jane? Mayor, when did the, when did Franklin Hall get torn down?
I don't know that.
Okay.
Do you have someone to mow the grass?
What's that?
If you have someone to mow the grass, I might have a volunteer that I can force to go mow it.
We have, the folks from Red Blue Water are going to be our volunteer mowers, great company, by the way, they just, they can't do enough to help us except buy us a mower, um, but they will be, um, volunteering to do, do the mowing of the, we buy them.
So do you need someone to mow it? Because I have a gasoline powered mower, but I could probably force someone to do that tomorrow if you wanted to.
Let's talk.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, we, we realize that, you know, we didn't realize that.
But it looks great, I, I saw the chief out there spraying it, I went to say like, "Hey, thanks for doing it," but it was like a pool mist, a water coming off there, and he couldn't hear me yelling.
Um, okay, um, anybody else?
I'm, in talking to CH and Scott to figure out if there's something we can do with that sidewalk, just to fill it in, because eventually you're going to be tearing it all out.
Yeah.
But we're trying to figure out something to do with that.
Yeah, some kind of patch.
Yeah, it, you are right, the contractors are, are not easy to find right now, they'll jump in and do something like that, especially in that situation, so we'll see what we have. Um, my guy's been tied up to pull, and I haven't had him out, well, they, they've been out patching potholes the last two days, and so we'll see where they go.
Okay.
So.
Well, we, remember Barbara went out and bought what we needed to patch it, and then, and this is about, who's the CEO of S. Plaid Weaver, and I just don't think he has either the time or the, uh.
He has good cheese.
He's got good cheese, so, yeah.
It's quite, it's, it's quite intimidating, I mean, it's not something for the, the home contractor to, to, to take, try to challenge.
So we discovered. Okay. Any others?
Jane and Louboutin, tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Thanks, one and all.
Thank you.
Feel free to reach out anytime, anywhere, I usually go to bed around eleven, eleven thirty, so, anytime I'm available, I'm kidding.
Thank you.
Public Works in Chatham, Councilman Booker.
Yeah, thanks for, uh, passing it, passing my way there. Um, so, uh, we're going to take a look at our first action item this evening, uh, action on the conditional offer of employment, uh, that this will be a duplicate, but obviously the name will be different. Um, anyway, action on a conditional offer of employment to, um, Michelle Jane Chivister, uh, as a probationary, uh, patrol officer with a beginning salary of fifty-six thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars, effective upon successful completion of required testing.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a, makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman, you have seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And our second item, item is of similar nature, action on a conditional offer of employment to, um, William Francis Cash, um, as a probationary off, patrol officer with a beginning salary of fifty-six thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars, effective upon success, successful completion of a required, of required testing.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilman Martin makes the motion.
Second.
Councilman Agarson, second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, our next item, uh, in the Public Works in Chatham, uh, action to award the wastewater treatment plant fine stream installation project to Cap, is it Capita or Cap?
Cap.
Cap associated in, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred dollars, commissioned upon the receipt from Cap Associates, uh, executing construction agreements, performance and payment bonds, and other required contract documents subject to the solicitor's review and approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
So, Louie.
Mr. Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Booker, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Aye, I yield endless, if there's any other comments from any other members of the Public Works in JP, committee, I yield to the president.
Thank you.
That's official.
Public Works in Recreation, Councilman.
Uh, I have an action, uh, to offer employment to lifeguards, water watchers, and clerks at the hourly rate and positions as outlined on the memo dated five twenty-four, twenty twenty, from Manager Sifiski, attached in eleven, and I think we also have it in front of us.
That has the new, the freedom for you to send to me on it.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a? Councilman, Councilman, from you, is there a second?
I'll count second.
Councilwoman Agarson, seconds. And you will note that there are three additional names on this list that were added after the initial list was published. Uh, just to note, is Council, okay with approving the water watchers position as it stands?
I was going to ask that as well, and, and I know you've got the new decision this year, right? It is, our, and, and I, if I may, part of my discussion with Kilmer, Josh Kilmer for the insurance company is, he does not recommend that. company, is, he does not recommend that. He feels that that could potentially lead a liability problem there. If you have a water watcher that's standing there saying, "There's a person over here who needs help," and why wasn't that person trying to help those people, did not just pointing out?
Well, that issue was brought up at the manager's committee meeting, which was that there's two members of the water watcher list that are also lifeguards, and if there's a situation in which somebody's life is in danger, they're going to perform the highest function of their job, which is as a lifeguard.
They have to, yes.
And they have, they will save the person, and that...
So are all the bodies who are lifeguards?
Then two of them are.
Okay.
And one of them is a front desk clerk. So that leaves two who are not either lifeguards already or a front desk clerk, and one of them is the recreation director. So...
I do have a comment I made. So when Manager Sisinski brought this to my attention, my first question was, what is a water watcher? And I discovered that a water watcher program is a national initiative to, to have people who are trained, not as lifeguards, but to augment the standard lifeguard contingency they have on duty at any given time, to have an extra set of eyes on the water. So that's the purpose of the program. Second piece I wanted to take a look at was, what is the intent of this, the water watcher, water watcher program in this case? And it is just that it's not to reduce the number of lifeguards on duty at any given time. In fact, there are, there are state regulations in terms of the number of lifeguards that the Mechanicsburg Borough must have on duty at any given time based upon the area of the pool and the capacity of the pool. So the agreement that the borough has with the school district in terms of staffing the lifeguards, the managers are required to make sure that they're complying with state regulations at all times when the pool's open. So we're still going to have same, have the same number of lifeguards on duty, but with the water watchers, who'd be, again, extra sets of eyes on the water. But they wouldn't be there to necessarily perform lifeguard duties or lifesaving duties, but if they're capable of doing that, it's possible that, or I think that would happen.
So my question would be, is how are they staffing that? So like, when they propose having a water watcher, are they on call for a certain, like, scenario?
No, I don't think so, because it's not like, well, we're down a lifeguard, so we need two water watchers. You know what I mean? It doesn't, they're, they're simply an addition.
So when, when are they scheduled? Like, so what, like, are they just scheduled randomly, or...
I don't know if they are scheduled as they are available. That would be a question probably to ask whoever, probably two. But they're not, there is no way to perform to replace any lifeguard at all. So it's just like, you know, having an extra mom standing on the side of the pool to grab somebody's attention. And it's not like, we just leave this up, you know? And that's real thing.
And are they doing the national accreditation program, like, training for this?
I don't know if there is actual training for it or not.
I think the other thing would be to get an indication from them as to how many hours they're going to staff, because that has a budget implication for, so now, you know, we have 22 lifeguards on this list that are lifeguards, right? And then we're going to pay an additional person how many hour, how many hours a week at $10 an hour.
I think, and that is absolutely a good question, but I think where this came from was because he had somebody saved last year, like, I think that a lot of the, a lot of the staff at the pool felt like they couldn't do that again this summer. They couldn't go through that again. Like, something had to change, something had to be different. So, you know, adding an extra set of eyes, will it help? Maybe, hopefully?
And there's other things that they've implemented too, right? So they're going to have the, where we need jackets for non-swimmers, and then they're going to be doing the swim test again this year, which I think they didn't do last year. I, I think it goes back to me, like, the same thing, like, budgeting, like, how do you schedule it? And what scenarios do you have a water watcher versus not having a water watcher? Because their availability shouldn't be when we schedule it. I think that there probably should be some, like, a reason for it. Like, on weekends, they said, "Hi, you know, attendance, we would do that," because that, you know, safety precautions are really important.
Well, again, like, there's two water watchers who are essentially going to be lifeguard, who are also lifeguards, who are essentially going to be looking as lifeguards but for less pay.
Right.
I'll, I'll chime in here too. I don't, I don't think the optics of some of our rec board members being on a, like, that just seems weird, like, they're recommending that they are hired, like, it just doesn't feel, I don't know, just, I don't know.
Who's supervision, I mean, who would supervise them, not overall, but like, during their shift, to make sure they're in place where they need to be? Do you know that? It would be the pool manager.
I would say so, yes.
Whoever's the manager on duty at the time, yeah.
And do we have enough lifeguards now?
We have 22.
22, and I think 20...
25, 25 is, is the minimum they shot for last year. Wouldn't we be better off to sign more, more lifeguards, staffing it with one more lifeguard during the peak time?
I think they're still trying to find them, and they won't stop trying to find them, but...
Yeah, we have some come and go throughout the year too, so then, you know, and there's some on there that'll work, that'll work extra shifts if they want to and stuff, but...
My other question would be, let's approve the lifeguards and clerks. We could get more clarification on the water watchers in terms of how they want to use them and their role.
And the hours.
And how many hours they're going to work.
Okay.
So that we can determine the budget implication for that.
So I, like, and I think it should, like, we should think about, you know, if there is a capacity, like, during high-flow, volume time, that we're using water watchers. I think there needs to be a practicality to it.
Yeah, okay.
But I do, I do second Councilman Booker's question of having volunteer board members now be paid at the pool. It definitely...
Well, and the other, I did attend the rec board meeting, and the rec board members were surprised to find themselves on the list.
Yes.
And then, and then one of the board members did know that they were going to get paid as, as water.
The pool manager, the pool manager's one that made the list and sent it to us. They're the ones that did the interviews and established the list, so...
But I, I mean, I understand what they're trying to do, and it's trying to be the most safe we can possibly be at the pool, and I think that's really a great goal, you know, absolutely a party number one in terms of what we're up for. But at the same time, I think we have some additional questions on the, on the water watchers, and, you know, when I first learned it, I thought that there would be other people involved, just water watchers, and not just people who are already involved.
Should we advertise for more water watchers than what you meant?
Well, this, this, Sosa Cassie, our agreement with the school district does not speak to water watchers. Should we amend that?
I don't think it's necessary. I don't think they...
You're correct. The agreement does not contemplate the hiring of water watchers. And to, to, several points have been made, Seating, in terms of wanting to have some oversight and control from a budgetary standpoint, I think it would make sense to either amend the agreement or have some kind of memorandum of understanding in terms of how and when water watchers will be employed, if that's something...
That's right.
That we're council's interested in doing.
Well, and the other thing that convinced me is, I guess that there's a national water watcher program. I think that if we are going to say that, we need to have that training done for the water watchers, because I don't want the association saying that we're doing a national program that we don't have the training program for. If that makes sense.
That goes back to the initial comment about the insurance company not feeling comfortable that us hiring people would be, so we want to get their buy-in as well.
Well, that's what, that was part of the discussion with, with Mr. Kilmer, when he was here with renew the insurance with, and discussing the water watcher program. It, there is a national program, but the situation, it appears it's for like home-based or association-type pools. It's not necessarily for municipal or public swimming pools.
Like at a hotel?
Yes. Whereas, you know, or if you're having a party in the backyard, you have certain parents that are designated as water watchers. The pool is upon, yes.
So would the, would the person who made the motion and made the second, they went to amend that in order to take the water watcher's position out and table that for future clarification?
Mm-hmm. Oh, was that you? Okay. You were there for that already.
We shoot something.
Yeah, she was.
So, Councilwoman O'Neil, your take?
Yes.
Councilman Barton, your take?
Yes.
Okay, some direction we can move forward. Is there any further discussion?
I'm just going to add into the questioning that I went and answered before we were voting on the water watcher part, would be one about the fact that we're employing people that are on a volunteer board. Are they, would they have to retire as a volunteer on a board that's overseen or appointed by us, or how does that...
Sosa Cassie.
No, there's no, there's no discretion with respect to volunteers on a board to be employed in a, in a different capacity.
Okay.
But it's, but it's not a conflict of interest that we're standing at exactly.
So I believe there was no action taken at the, at the rec board meetings?
On this?
I don't think they voted to recommend their own approval.
Correct. They did not.
Sorry.
They did vote to recommend the pay scale, but that was before they knew they were going to be on the list.
Yes. And they were smart.
Right.
So a motion is second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Call please. Motion passes.
Yes, so an update on the slide, per the email from Manager Sisinski, the man will be out Thursday morning to complete the slide repair, and then it will be a matter of getting the, the inspection done.
Yep.
And then the pool open.
The pool will be open one way or the other. I do not, I'm going to be honest with you, I would not expect the slides to be okay for this weekend.
Okay.
I, I, I would try, but I'm not...
So the pool will be open, the slides will be closed until it's inspected?
The pools are open. We're going to sample waters tomorrow. That'll be sent off, so we should, Friday morning, we should have those test samples back. And then everything's ready to turn over to Sue, come first, next Saturday morning.
If we have an inspector, could you find someone to?
I have to call the department. Until I had a date of when he was going to show up, that's $600 to have them come and do this, and I wasn't going to, I didn't want to pay for it twice.
I have nothing further, your honor.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil, Councilwoman Agarson.
We have an action to offer the position of the MS4 Public Outreach Coordinator to Barbara Arnold, at a starting rate of 22 an hour, beginning July 1st, attached in 12.
Salute. Second.
Led by Vice President Anthony, second by Councilman Booker. Any discussion?
We're very excited for this. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We've come to the point that they intend to put a second shot at citizens' comment. So, one, citizens' comment. Jane, I'm moving on to other business.
No, my leave.
What?
I don't know my leave.
It's been a long day, I'm sorry. Uh, no, I have nothing further.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing.
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 I will, the only thing I have is that I was at the pollinator garden installation and a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, and that was very informative and a wonderful project for the environment and for the borough, and, you know, kudos to everybody who's involved, Ms. Arnold and Superintendent Hewie, and the Penn State Master Watershed Program. Thanks to them for their participation, and that was, it's a great event. Good to it. Return.